Any changes to the agenda?
Good question. Is there one added for the?
There was a higher, wasn't there?
Uh, there was one more resignation and I'm not sure if Brooke got that on.
I see there's three of them on here.
She sent me everybody's one today.
Yes, she's got it, so it should be updated. Up to date.
All right, looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So more.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bobby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. We will be moving on to public comments at 5.1. Hannah, you sure? Okay. Did you want to say anything first or just let them do it?
Um, I'll add in if we have any gaps.
Okay, absolutely. Okay, perfect. All right.
Welcome, thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks for having us. Um, we're all on the board, my name's Caitlin Revere, I'm the secretary. And so this summer we started our planning by having monthly meetings to plan the agenda ahead of time, which we don't always do, but we thought it would help us be more organized. And so far it has really helped us this year. But in June, we had the opportunity to go to the National Student Council Convention. And Ms. Fisher took us down there for three full days of activities. We got to listen to well-known speakers such as Amy Kobachar and Kat Perkins. And we also got to listen to Monte Selby and Elvin Law. Not sure if you recognize any of those names, but they're well-known as well. And we learned a lot about effective leadership, ways that we can lead our student council better and be more efficient in what we do. We also got to network with other schools around the country, not only in Minnesota, but we met a lot of people from the south. And just getting to talk about other students, about what works in their school, what doesn't work, what we could bring back here, it was really beneficial. And so we hope to continue it in the future. And then also in August, we cleaned up the teachers lounge as a little welcome back to school and to show our appreciation for what the teachers do for us.
And I'm Julie Kelso, I'm student council president. And I'll take you guys through what we have done so far this year, this school year. So in September, we started up the backpack program and recycling in our monthly shows at Church is United. And this will continue throughout the whole year. We also helped with the carnival and we pretty much did everything for homecoming, including the elections and coronation setup, the Powerpuff and Muscleball games, the pep rally, the dance. This year we had a couch that we put on the field and sold raffle tickets for, which was new. And then we paired up with NHS to do a birthday bag activity. In October, we started up the Buddy Program and we also do that with NHS. Currently there are 33 high school students paired up with the Glendon Elementary students, which is really cool. And we do a various amount of activities. Some people, or some elementary students need more help academically, so we help them with that. Otherwise, a lot of people take them for walks and talk, or play in the gym, or even just sit down and color with them, just to give them a little relief from the school day. In October, we also did a blood drive. And we went trigger canning at the end of the month for Fill the Dome. During trigger canning, we raised 3,327 items in just under two hours. In November, we, the board, went to a state leadership forum in Brainerd. We went with some middle school students. And we got to pair up with some of the same students we met at Nationals. And we did a lot of like the same stuff, but different. So like leadership building, small group discussion. And we also had inspirational speakers. One of the speakers was actually the one that we had today at our school, so that was really cool. And we also had Fill the Dome in November, which is kind of our big project. And this year we did pair up with ReShape and we had a little competition with Morehead, so we can get out into the community a little bit more. And then in December, we have done our Random Acts of Kindness. So we split up into smaller groups and we got to pick something that we wanted to do for Random Acts of Kindness. My group, for example, had a craft with the kindergartners and helped them with that. And a couple of other groups I know sent letters to the elementary students from Santa or from the elves. So, and then there are a few other ones that other groups are doing. We also paired with NHS to decorate the school for the holidays and do a door decorating contest. We decided to do that this year because we wanted to, we know that it's kind of a long period between Thanksgiving and Christmas break. It's kind of an awkward time, so we wanted to kind of brighten up and like bring the holiday spirit into the school a little bit more and make it a more positive atmosphere for the holidays. We also helped Glendon Elementary with their school store. We did this mostly by ourselves, but NHS did help a little bit with that. So we just kind of helped them with count money and stuff, buy things for their parents. Throughout the month, we had bell ringing shifts, mostly on the weekends. And that was for the Salvation Army, so we got a whole block of shifts and people signed up and ringing bells, it was really cool. And then our talent show is coming up this Friday. And in past years, we've organized an afternoon filled with fun activities as well. But a lot of people were disappointed that that wasn't approved for this year. But we are still having the talent show, which is nice.
I'm Ashen Tegerson, and for our upcoming events for the rest of the school year, we have Mental Health Week, which is a big focus for January and throughout February. We did do Snow Week last year, but we didn't have great participation or a great turnout, so instead we're really focusing on mental health. Doing different things, like trying to end the stigma, make it a safer place. Maybe do dress up days like homecoming, but instead coordinating it with one color represents kindness for a day. One represents compassion. Trying to raise awareness on different mental illnesses and help people get the help that they need. We are going to be continuing Day of Caring, which is something that we partner with NHS for. And that's go to houses and help clean up yards, neighborhoods. Maybe like a churchyard if they need a bunch of their leaves ready to go after spring or different things like that. And we will have one to two more blood drives this year. We usually do sponsor most of the blood drives throughout the year. If another group wants to, they are always welcome to, but we do sponsor most, the majority. And then Teacher Appreciation Week. That kind of just helps show how much we appreciate the teachers for all that they do throughout the school year, since they do so much, bringing in like potluck, a bunch of food for breakfast for them one day, writing notes to them, different things like that. So that's what we have.
Um, I guess I'll just add in that I'm really proud of this group. And like other people in our district, other staff members come to me often with requests for students to like head up an activity or help out with something. And even if it's the night before, I send a message to all of them and I get like instant responses to fill all of the spots and it's awesome. So they've been a huge help to our district, a huge asset.
I want to thank you for your leadership in doing what you do. You're an awesome example of wonderful students we have. I know when I had walked through Glendon Elementary and, uh, last week, and I was just blown away by all the things in the hall, I'm just like, this is so awesome. And I just had to go down there and look at every single thing that you had out there. And so then I met with Brian and I'm like, this is so cool, you have to go over there and see it. It was just neat. And I was speaking with somebody at work and I was telling them about the things that you guys had out in the hallway. And she is from a small town in North Dakota. And she said during homecoming, when I grew up in homecoming, we had chicken wire fence, we had the floats, it was awesome. But you guys don't get to do that fun stuff anymore. But what they do is they have, that they decorate a hallway. Everybody has a certain hallway. And then they have like the elementaries go through and judge the winners during homecoming week. And I was just thinking of that when she had mentioned just the awesome stuff that you guys had done at Christmas. And I thought, I don't know if that would work at?
We were thinking about whether the elementary should come actually vote on our doors, door decorating.
Yep, yeah, I mean, kudos, I mean, you guys, you're rocking it. Thank you very much for all of your time and commitment that you have. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you for being awesome. Leader in that. They wouldn't be where they are unless they have somebody that supported them like you do. So we appreciate that very much. All right. Don't have anybody down to speak other than that? Uh, 6.1, we will move on to Board Committee Reports. I don't know if anybody has anything this month, other than your retreat.
Yep, Amy and I went down with David and Laura to Phase 1 and Phase 2. And it's amazing what you learn the second time around, it makes a lot more sense. So we were happy to have that time with them both and I think it went well. Amy, do you have anything to add to that?
No, we had a good time. It was good, it was fun.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun. On another note, Amy and Raleigh and I all had an opportunity to work at the Glendon Elementary Holiday Store. And that was a lot of fun. I think Jolie came down when I was down there and she was graciously counting money. Raleigh was sweating and wrapping gifts. The kids, what an awesome thing our PTAs do. That store is amazing and just the things and the thoughtfulness that the children put in to buying gifts for their family and friends is just very heartwarming. Also, kudos, I was at our annual beat meetings and I had a gal that I know from way up in Grafton. She was in our elementary school the day that they had their holiday program, the kindergartners, and she just couldn't go stand up about how wonderful, wonderful our school was and what the program meant to her. So I think that's pretty impressive and pretty cool, so.
Right, yeah, definitely a lot of, a lot of good things going, so.
I think part of the safety and security piece that we crave so bad with our school district isn't just in buildings, but you know, encourage parents to get out there. The PTAs in both Dilworth and Glendon need volunteers. And I think that's huge, and getting to know the kids that your kids are around and getting to know the environment and the teachers and stuff like that, I think that's like the number one key piece to that. So I would encourage anybody to volunteer. It was fun, I don't, you guys had fun. Whoever came from the Honor Society or Student Council came down to help, that was awesome, so.
I think there was one, a student there the whole time I was there. There were different ones taking shifts, so that was very nice to see them interacting with the younger students. And they just so look up to you guys and it's such a, such a big thing for them.
You were, you were young once too, you know? And you look at those older kids and you just think, I mean, you just, you idolize them, you know? And so, even though you're really, really young for us, but anyway, okay, thank you.
Well, and it's fun to see all the, the community reacts to, I know, I know the one day at Hornbacher's during the food drive, what was it? One person came in and purchased how many?
25 bags.
25 bags at 10 bucks a bag, just because of seeing students lead this. So, and it was anonymous, just evidently one of the tellers said, you know, somebody came up and, and said that they wanted 25 of them.
That's awesome.
$250, just like that.
Yeah. And Brian came to the store, that was really nice. Thank you for coming.
Did you buy stuff?
No, I didn't.
He didn't shop, I tried to get him to buy some army socks for Raleigh over there, but I think they were...
I got enough.
I went shopping last night at the school store.
Oh, there you go.
There you go. Lots of awesome things happening though.
Yes, yes, definitely. Okay, so now we'll go to the, kind of the?
Big one.
The big one? 6.2, we will be doing the 2018 payable 19 levy report.
And I put this in as a report piece before we get the action items, because this is, this would be the one time that during a board meeting where we do have an opportunity for public input. So this, you don't have to, basically just get our attention if you have a question regarding the levy. There's a couple of reports that I handed out to all the board members. These are the same numbers that we had from the September, the initial levy report. The numbers haven't changed. But the, there's a two-page report and we've got a copy that is in the board book, so that if anyone wants to look at that information, or if anyone would want a copy sent to them, just shoot me an email, it's on the website and I'll get you a copy of this. But basically, the two-page report that I've handed out to the board members and our incoming board members, shows the trend over since fiscal year 13 into fiscal year 20. The way that the levies work, of course, it's 2018, 2018 payable, 2019 is the levy that's being done tonight. And because it's 2018 payable, 2019, it actually affects fiscal year 20. Because the fiscal year runs from July 1 of 19 through June 30 of 20. So when we look at something that is being approved by the school board tonight on levy, it's in fiscal, in 2018 payable during the calendar 2019 year affecting the fiscal year 2020. So when you see these numbers on FY '20, it's the reason why it actually is FY '20, because you're affecting actually into two different fiscal years. And I, I give this information because, and I was talking to Ronnie a little bit beforehand, when, when people look at their, their tax statements, and the other piece of data that all the board members have is the one-page levy sheet that is for approval tonight. And the numbers on that levy sheet are actually in the fiscal year 20 columns on the second sheet. And what you'll notice is, so our levy from last year to this year went up from 2.43 million to 2.598 million. So it's an increase in the levy. Part, there's, there's multiple factors for the increase in the levy. Number one, we have, we qualify for achievement and integration funds. This is a new program to DGF. We qualify only because of Morehead actually, and neighboring school districts. So achievement and integration is associated with if you happen to have demographic groups, minority groups that are high, higher numbers than associated school districts, neighboring school districts. So in the past, we have not qualified for that. Morehead qualifies based on its American Indian population. And because of that, and us being a neighboring school district, we also qualify for that funding. It is an equalized funding stream. For DGF, it's approximately $90,000. 70% aid, 30% levy. So again, it doesn't have a large impact on our levy. The second factor that probably, the second factor that goes into play for the increase in the levy is the long-term facility maintenance funds. We have full programming on long-term facility maintenance. It's been phased in over three years, going from just under $200 a pupil unit to 280 some to 380 some, or three. I think it basically is about $190 in, it's increased from initial 180, 190 to basically just a little under $400 per pupil unit. So it's been a three-year phase-in process. So that would be a second factor that would account for some of the increase for the district. We really didn't have any other factors as a school district. But of course, the categoricals and again, the sheets for the, the board to have on the aid levy sheets, the, the bigger 11 by 14 sheets, where you see the categoricals, gifted and talented, in particular, some that are based on aid and levy breakdown. Operating capital is one. Operating capital, you notice we have $316,000, that is the aid. The levy is 94,000. So the levy went up a little bit, notice that the aid decreased. So again, what happens is, these are equalized. And what I did on all of these, I put down whether they were equalized based on net tax capacity or whether they're equalized based on the RMV or the referendum market value. The difference between the two, of course, is if it's referendum market value, that does not include the ag land. It includes just the house and one acre of land. So your seasonal rec land, your agricultural land is not included in the RMV. So at the state level, these categoricals are rated by how much money you have in tax capacity per pupil. So it's basically taking your total RMV as a school district, dividing it by your amount of pupil units, and that tells how much money you, how property wealthy or property poor you are as a district. And the more property rich you are, the less aid you get. And they move more of it over to levy. So again, it's one of those factors where we may do nothing different as a school district, but if our amount of wealth based on the property increases, they're going to say, you get to have more levy. And so the trend data that the board can, can see the history on these to see what's taken place on some of these equalized, have we been seeing better aid or less aid on these percentages? And you can see it very quickly which ones have changed. So it's a major factor for DGF. And remember, we had more property that came into our school district, because all the housing over in Woodbridge, those first two sections are now in the school district, which gave us more property wealth affecting both the RMV and the total wealth, the net tax capacity. The net tax capacity is the total value of all of our property in the school district, all of the land, including all of the ag and the seasonal rec. So if you happen to see on your tax statements, if anybody in the public is here that, you know, is wondering, why did my taxes go up? There's a few factors. You know, the levy itself went up. And the levy went up partly because our aid levy mix changed, we got less aid. We get the same amount of money for operating capital. It's so much per pupil unit. But what the state decides then is how much of it's going to be levy and how much is going to be aid. And that changes every year based on the property wealth. And those of you who live in the district know that, two years ago, the Clay County made a major redefining of property wealth of residential. And most people saw anywhere from a 14% increase on the residential prop value, market value, all the way to 35, even high 30s on their houses. And so what happened is, we know that the ag value went down, but the residential went up so much more that we actually became more property wealthy than we had been before, meaning we're going to get, to have more levy authority. So I don't know how much that helps most of you with your egg, with, with your property statements, but now would be the time, if you have some general questions, if anybody has any questions about their tax statements, we could try to answer them. And if you want to go over statements with me after the meeting, more than, more than fine, board members know I love going through.
Love those numbers.
I really enjoy that part of it, because it has such a huge impact on the decisions that the board makes and, and how we figure out, how we make decisions about the economics for the district, how it's going to affect all of our taxpayers, so. Anybody have any questions on it? That's one of the easiest TNTs I've ever done. Board members, do you have any questions on, again, the levy sheets aren't any different than they were this fall? But those, those are the three main factors of why the, our levy would have gone up. So if you get questions from the public, again, it's because of our equalization. Our pupil units haven't changed, in fact, they went down just eight pupil units. But so, so many things are based on the equalization factors. And so the, the fact that we have achievement integration, the fact that the valuation changed, and if the valuations changed, that means the aid levy percentages changed. And that has a definite impact. And the only, the last factor is just the fact that we have full long-term facility maintenance funding. We will not see that type of a change moving forward on it. And we're actually in full, this past year, we hit into full on it, so.
Just so you guys know, you don't have to, if you have things to do, I know this isn't the most thrilling.
Unless you're getting extra credit for it.
Are you getting extra credit? Stay right where you are.
One of them isn't, but she said she wanted actually, when I said, no, don't stay here, she's like, you can't tell me it's a public meeting. She gets it from her mom.
Well, I just wanted to give you an out if you needed any. Okay, all right, now 6.3.
So that, I don't get real long-winded on this, I gave you hard copies. So a few things, you've got an overall hard copy on the front page, land acquisition, just some of the pieces associated with it. The title, we'll transfer the title, as the, as the purchase agreement says, that will be transferred upon the final payment to Karen and Lloyd, Karen and Terry, I should say. The taxes will be split. There is a person renting, so assuming that we won't do anything with the property in summer of 19, that will continue and we'll just work on the rental agreement. And then the last thing, the, the purchase agreement is set up with us having the closing costs. There's some on, of course, the tax, the deed and, and such.
I just said minimal.
Oh, yeah, so that part. The, the second is a, we were contacted by the Mayor's Blue Ribbon Group out of the FM area. The mayors of Dilworth and Morehead contacted and, and the two school districts, Morehead and DGF are looking at, we'll sit down and have some meetings on this, looking at a drug-free community grant, which is through SAMZA, the federal government. I was at another district that had this type of funding. It's a five-year grant, renewable for an additional five years. Great timing, because I know both Heidi and Wayne have been talking at the leadership levels of their sites and the 612 leadership, some of the issues. One, one of the key ones that we would be addressing in this is vaping. And so it goes perfect into the context of the drug-free community grants. So actually, was contacted today to get a meeting set up in early January. And so we will start putting a, a group together from DGF to work on the grant proposal. And what would happen is, this will be due in March, and so we'll be approaching both school boards. Here's what the grant would entitle, here's what DGF would be saying, here's all it would be affecting. And it will affect all of the DGF students. It isn't just about for the two communities that the mayors are representing. One of the first things, when I was contacted, I emailed back that this has to be open to all DGF students or I don't see us interested in this. I don't want to be breaking up the communities on this, this affects all of our kids. Shouldn't matter where they, where they happen to have residence. So that is exciting, and I think we have strong possibilities with it. The rest, a lot of the documents that I'm sharing with you, the next pages, are all on enrollment. And since over 80% of our funding for our school district is based on state aid. And as you can see from our levy sheets I've given you, a very high majority of that funding is based on our basic aid, which is how many kids we have, how many students are enrolled. So the first one, and I'm just gonna, I'm gonna just give you a summary of these. The first one you have, which is a front and back, just shows based on, once we had the students enrolled in September, so that's why it has a September 18 date, get a couple of weeks into the school year, so that we can find out which kids have come and gone. Sometimes even the week before school starts, we don't know if people are coming back, because we haven't been contacted. There were some difficult decisions starting out the year. You could see at the beginning of the year, we had some equity issues between our two elementaries in our number... elementaries in our numbers. You can see the ratios. Kindergarten, we were in good shape, starting out 20 to 1 ratio at both, but as you see the disparity, first grade, 18 to 19 at the Dilworth site, 15 to 16 at the Glendon site, and so on and so forth, that disparity is, is, has gotten worse. We've had some drop in enrollment from that second week. The Glendon site back in September for the elementary, and this is just the elementary, was 362, and now 351, so a drop of 11 from that time. The week before school started, it's actually 22 from what was calculated and expected. So 11 since the beginning of school. The Dilworth site has gone from the beginning of school, 446, and you notice it's 446 since the beginning of the school year. So that stayed very similar. But again, it affects the equity in how many kids are in each section. Some that definitely are easy to pinpoint, first grade, we have five sections at the Dilworth site, between 18 and 19 students per section, at the Glendon site, between 14 and 15. At the, then second grade, 21, 22, at the Glendon site, 16 and 17. Third grade, 23 per section for four sections, at the Glendon site, 15 and 16. And again, it's those numbers. What do you do with 31 kids? You know, you have less sections, so you have more variability. Fourth grade, Dilworth, 23, 24, at Glendon, three sections, 16 and 17. So we are looking at some adjustments, and in fact, even potential with the plans on, on the facilities that could look at the equity issues here. So this is the enrollment for this year. Board members are well aware, I love trend data, I think it gives us, helps us become a lot more informed. The next sheets is since 2003 through 2018, the October, again, this is during the MARS submission. So the October numbers, the first sheet that you're seeing there is the total amount of students we serve, K through 12. And you'll see that in 2015, the fall of 2015 was our high point, at 1642. From that point, we've gone 1628, 1620, and this fall, we just dropped right below 1600. So that definitely has an effect. The second sheet is the residents served. And I've talked about this before, and this is the numbers to back it up. If you look at 2003, our residents served was 1227. 2018, our residents served 1128. Now, to actually calculate our total residents, we have to look at the residents served plus the residents going out. We have a new report here that will show that also. The next sheet, and again, I'm just giving you the summaries now so that I don't keep you hostage for half an hour on this. The next sheet is residents served elsewhere. And again, you have this full spreadsheet document, it's been shared, but this is just a printout of all of it. So you can see how many residents we've served elsewhere, and so if you take the residents served elsewhere and add it to the residents served, you can look to see what our total resident count is. The next two, see, the next one is open enrollment served. And you'll notice from our high point was in fall of 2015, we had 599 students open enrolled in that were serving. We presently have 471 in the October MARS report. So we've dropped by a little over 100, 128 students open enrolled.
Are some of those though that have transferred into our district?
Yes. Yes, they've become resident. So, and there was probably, if I recall, I believe there was around 70 that were in those, those sections. It is in one of the reports that shows how many students we had in each of those first two sections. Plus, remember, Summerwood was also open enrolled at the time. So all of those kids that were, we were serving already in Summerwood and in the first two sections of Woodbridge that transferred in, in 2016, July of 2016, they're now resident. So you'll see that taking place when you look at all these reports and start looking at the numbers. The next two sheets are without, it's, and we've been tracking the open enrollment in that we serve, so just so that the board and the public and as we are getting, having more conversations about referendum and bond discussions, these are the areas of open enrollment. The first four in color are the areas associated with the sections of Woodbridge that will be transferring into DGF, in the order that they'll be transferring. So there is still one section north of Fourth Avenue, so it's the furthest east section, north of Fourth, that will be transferring in. That's the next one to go, and you can see how many students are in there, and I see it cut it off through ninth grade on my copy. So there's, there's 30-some in that area. I'm not sure why it cut it off on this printout, but then the next three sections are from Fourth going down to Third Avenue, and then the last one going to Highway Town. So there's four sections yet to be transferred on the east end of Dilworth. The rest of the sections are Dilworth West End, so west of County Road 9. So if you think of the apartments along the Frontage Road between County Road 9 and going over to 34th, those apartments there, and then the apartments over by Walmart. Those are all part of the city limits of Dilworth, but they're in Morehead School District. So that's the ones represented on the Dilworth West End, then Morehead, true Morehead, and there's actually 250 total. And again, I apologize at grades 10 through 12, I'm not sure why I didn't show on this printout, but, and I will email you a copy of this. And then the last sheet is a new one. We thought, let's find out how many we have actually open enrolled out of the district. So these are our actual numbers of resident population that are open enrolled out of DGF, and what school districts they're going to. And just so you're aware, we, and we talked about this in our admin cabinet last week, John Jacobson is going to work with Region 1, and we are actually going to put a new field into our student information system so that when we have the students disenrolled, we can actually get the reason put directly right into there. So we can find out whether it happens to be because of co-curricular or extracurricular activities, did they actually move out of the school district, was it a physical move or not? Was it because of, you know, fine arts? If there's a particular reason, and we'll be able to have that into another category where they can give us more information. So we can get those type of printouts now into our system to be able to start looking at what are the specific reasons we're open rolling out. And at least then, now you can see that the districts, if you're wondering on the other category, you can see that that's typically involving high school students, and it's typically meaning that they're at another location that they have maybe been sent to, served farther away, maybe at another school for particular needs of students. Does that help? That's as quick as I can go over enrollment. There's a lot of data there. But I want you to know I'm a smooth, smooth track with this.
That's good.
That's all I have on that piece, and the other ones, strategic planning, this is something we talked about, and, you know, where are we at in the process? And administratively, we've been having more conversations about this. For us to go into a full strategic planning process needs to be something that when we get through the, let's put it this way, the bond issue, the referendum, you're going to be spending so much time on that component. When we get through the bond, then we need to go back through, look through our existing, you can see what in the past, and it's, it's a number of years since this has been looked at, mission and beliefs. When we go through this process, as we get through the bond referendum, then it's perfect timing when we know that we're doing that. Now we sit and we start looking at what is the mission, what is the vision that goes with that? Because it'll be perfect timing as we're talking about what is the programming that we actually put into the building. So if we're going to have the discussions on, we have to do more in the CTE, and we need to be offering more of this. That part, the mission, the vision, the beliefs, all will go hand in hand as we go into 2019, 20, and we start looking at, here's what we're actually putting into the buildings. Because we go into that and we update the belief statements, we update the mission and the vision statements. So it's all part of the process. Right now, you are doing strategic planning. Your strategic planning just happens to be, what are we doing with buildings? The next phase is what do we do with the programming in the buildings? And that's where mission, vision, beliefs, all will go hand in hand.
Is that something that the, you know, we would consider, or the future board would consider, you know, not outsourcing, but having somebody come in and work with it?
Yes.
Jeff Schatz, a visit with him at Costco, I think he's currently working with 23 different districts.
Yep, and, and actually, those that went down to the Phase 1 and 2, you saw in your Phase 1 and 2, you know, Jeff Olson, you know, there's one of them through MSBA, and Jeff works directly, actually Jeff's name goes hand in hand with some of the work that we've had here, because him and one of the other individuals that's worked with us work as partners in a lot of this, Terry. So that's where the mission, when we get into the actual mission, vision, beliefs, it's what is the programming that we're going to be offering with this? We got to get the buildings moving forward, and then we get that next phase and bring everybody in to look at, here's what we want the buildings to look like because, and the programming to look like because this is our mission, vision, and our beliefs. So January, when we sit down with the architects down at MSBA, it'll give us a real good intro with having the full board there to talk about how do we lay out the next two, three years? Okay? And I just put down some of the athletic, it's, it's amazing as you can see how much goes on over Christmas break. It's like every one of those teams is, there is no Christmas break for most of our, of our student athletes. They're very busy. That's it.
Can you hear rumor that there's some teams that'll be practicing on Christmas Eve? Is that actually? No?
It's nice when Mr. O'Keefe's here, I'll just look right and hear him go.
Nothing Christmas Eve?
No.
Okay.
Christmas Eve morning, or is it?
Morning, morning is very important.
The last one sent out was, enjoy Christmas, and it was blocked out for.
Yeah, because I'm like, nobody should be practicing on Christmas Eve.
That's an easy one, I can stop it.
Perfect.
Where do you get that out to, that you're just going to stop?
Went right to his head, that little sign on the wall?
Yeah.
There's a very nice poster on the wall though, it really is.
Think she's important now.
Be bigger.
We'll check into it.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
You'll check into it.
Okay, thank you.
Delegated.
Yeah, it's good, good, that's what you need to do.
That's what you need to do.
Yep, all right. So we will move on to 7.1, the approval of the regular meeting, which was November 26.
So moved.
Sorry.
Motion by Amy and seconded by Scott. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 8.1 under business, the highlighted circled thing from Cindy.
Perfectly done.
Thanks Cindy, that helps.
Yeah, thanks Cindy.
All right. And your treasures report, Minnesota liquid asset, and your activities account is also in there. We have three resignations, Nicole Anderson, paraprofessional, effective December 21st, Jennifer Milbrett, January 25th, and resignation of Cassidy Bergy, effective January 4th. There are also three donations in there, one is from Gate City, one is from the estate of Donald Fisher, excuse me, two of them are from Donald Fisher, one is for baseball and one's for softball. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Raleigh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay. Any questions? Hearing no questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.1, this is certifying the final levy. This is what we just all talked about.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, is there a second? Was that Bobby?
Bobby.
Bobby? Okay.
Can you declare the final amount for the record?
Yep, you got it.
Okay, that is $2,598,048.51. That's the highlighted, right there. Got it. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Okay, and moving on to 9.3, this is the resolution establishing combined polling places. This would be for our referendum.
Well, 9-2.
I don't want to pay, I don't want to pay bills. Sorry. Yes, no bills, no bills. I'm sorry, let's look for giving Cindy the authority to run that final billing.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Now we will move on to 9.3, the resolution establishing combined polling places. That is in your packet.
So moved.
Okay, and, three locations, all three communities. Okay, so there's a motion by Scott, a second by Amy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign, this is a resolution, it's unread.
I wasn't worried for it.
Okay, a roll call. Raleigh.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Lindsay?
Aye.
And Bobby?
Aye.
And Scott?
Aye.
The records show six to zero on the resolution.
Because it's an extract anyway, for it.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, we will move on to the 9.4, the legislative leave request, this is for Paul Mar Court.
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second? Second by Bobby. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 9.5, this is the 2017/18 World Best Workforce Summary Report.
And that one should have been emailed out too. If you have any particular questions, we have the principals here, they, again, this is one, this was complete delegating. You know, when you look at that report, there's certain components that are just naturally go to the BERTA 5 Committee, and certain ones that naturally go 612. And so basically what they did, they divided out the components, they have to identify each of their levels. Are there any particular demographic groups that we have to identify? That's one of the components. So that's all in that plan. In particular, there's extra work that had to be done because we had a focus site based on our Native American population at the Glendon Felton Elementary. So that had to be identified into the report. It's a new format for the report because it also has achievement integration. We are not an achievement integration district yet. Next year, when we're reporting on World's Best Workforce and do this combined report, we will have a section on achievement integration, but this year we don't.
All right, looking for a motion to approve the report. Motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries, this is 9.6, the property acquisition. This is just the two payments, and then speaking with the landowner who is, or the person who is actually renting it right now, so. Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.7, this is the non-certified. Moving on to 9.7, this is the non-certified contract for Christina Seibels.
I'd say Seibels.
Seibels. Paraprofessional, effective January 2nd.
So moved.
Bobby and then Amy?
Okay, Bobby and then Amy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.8, this is the non-certified contract for Monica Blado, paraprofessional, effective January 2nd.
So moved.
Motion by Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bobby. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to the non-certified contract of Dan Morelli, okay, effective January 7th.
So moved.
Is that Lindsay?
Yep.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Amy. Are all of the resignations filled by all of?
We've got one new one as of tonight, so we still have one.
Just one.
Just one now.
Okay. Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor, and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. All right, we will look at, the next board meeting is Monday, January 14th, that is at 6 o'clock, that is here. But before we adjourn for the night, I'd like to...
Can I add another meeting potentially, if we could get a date together?
No.
We discussed about this before, doing an admin board meeting with the new school board members coming on, going through what each role is. I mean, when were you thinking about doing that? We were hoping for January?
Are you saying a work session?
Yeah, I think after we get back.
When we get back, so...
From MSBA.
From MSBA. So, on the 14th, we should have the date.
Okay. So, just keep it on your radar.
Okay. All right. So, I wanted to acknowledge Scott and Bobby for serving on the board.
You get to take your name. Those are, you pull those right out, not the people.
You can take the whole head.
No. Those for...
Not the budget.
R24, we need to... But we thank you very much for your time, your commitment to our district.
Thank you very much.
I know that you have always thought of all of our students for every decision that you have made. We thank you. And we, you know, we'd always want you to run again.
Don't take us off your speed dial. Just in case we need to call you guys.
I'm done in two years. Somebody is... Come on back.
We'll get the referendum done, and it'll be, you, look at this one, you've had a, a tremendous learning opportunity over these four years of experiencing so many different things.
And if you ever, you know, if you wanna run again, it's only two meetings a month, that's all.
Yeah.
You don't have any more commitment than that. And then I have...
No homework.
I have some swamp land to sell you, if you're ready for it.
No phone calls?
No phone calls, no nothing? Nope. Nope, you can go to the grocery store all by yourself and nobody's gonna stop you in the aisle.
No long emails from superintendent who likes to write novels.
No emails that says concern.
So, I've really enjoyed the last two years with the both of you and, and Rich. I would like to thank him as well for his service for our community. This is not an easy job. This isn't, it's way more work than I ever thought it was gonna be, but it's very rewarding. And just thank you guys for teaching us, so.
Thank you, Brian and Sandy, too, for your leadership, and good luck with the new ones coming on, and they'll stand on, and I look forward to hearing a while, and exciting things.
Yes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We know your phone numbers as we're trying to put together OPS groups.
Anything else to add?